Okay, we call it works off the city of Vernon October 4th, 2021 to order.
Good morning, Father. We thank you for this day and thank you for allowing us together here tonight. We ask that you guide us and help us to make the best decisions for our community. Lead us to do your will in all things that we do, keep our community and country safe. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about participation, Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, I appreciate the call. Good afternoon to me again. Aunt Diane's ditch over here, there's water getting in her house now. And it's not been, it just started this year before. Her ditch is perfectly clean. She, I think she hired a plumber to clean it. I don't know.
You're talking about Miss Diane Norman?
If you go look at the ditch behind it, that property that ditch flowed all the way through, it's not clean.
Did you see property or?
It does. It used to have ditches. We always did.
We're supposed to be cleaning the ditches. I know we mentioned it a few months ago.
Yeah, I asked about those ditches being cleaned up.
At one time, we had ditches pretty much too clean.
They can't clean them at one time? They brought up.
Yeah. Now, there's only one ditch in Vernon that I know that people want to allow you to clean. And that's, I can't think of one that goes like shelter.
There were, there was paperwork on the books for all of the, most all of these ditches and tunnels easements. But that's running behind.
Yes, ma'am. But another, another part of your problem, your ditches all by here are intended to carry most of the water on this side of the track to your retention ponds. That's what they were designed for. And now do that to keep it clean. And I'm not, I don't want y'all to think I'm coming up here beating on Jason. I'm not. It's the council responsibility to go around and look to see these things. I'm not beating on Jason to give him a job. They work. I know that.
Well, I have something to say about ditches because there's trees growing up in, going up in the house.
Mr. Gary, you said that it's going in her house?
Yeah. She has sandbags.
That is not the first time.
No. She has sandbags in front of the door. She'll call me, come put the sandbags down, slow it down.
And the store next to me, he has the business. He shouldn't have to be worrying about his ditch maintenance.
Well, it lies just behind my house, but it's still right up in my house.
But a lot of this, if these ditches are here clean on this side, they used to drain all the way just about from the road over there down this side into their retention pond. And that was one of the reasons why that retention pond was getting that water and a lot of this water from around here over there.
Because the road's flat now going to your house. It used to have a ditch on there. So I can say it's a clay in the ditch.
Right.
What I don't think is that we have the manpower to keep up with it. I think we're going to need to contract it out or something to have, to have it done.
To have it done.
At least to start with to get them back where they need to be and then they could be maintained.
We also discuss, it hasn't been done, I think, since, since your brother. But at one time we were able to utilize prisoners. The problem is right now we have to have somebody that's able to handle them. We can still get them. It's my understanding. We just have to have somebody that's trained to.
And we have to have transportation to pick them up.
Yes.
And if they're, if they can't keep up with the jobs they got right now, we can't hardly turn one loose to do that. That's my thoughts on it.
We did put in a work order for those ditches around these miners and that was completed last week. At least it was completed since.
That's after the job. This, I'm talking about the ditches.
She said the one beside the house between, on the side of her house is the one that was, the work order was sent in last week.
Her ditch is clean.
And Jason cleaned it.
If you go look at the road behind her, I see what they've done, but what they've done is not going to solve the problem. You know, I tell you about working them inmates. If you're working, they'll work.
We used to use those all the time.
They will be a big, big benefit to you. But you've got to be firm. You've got to work them. I've been down that road. Another thing I noticed, a lot of people still have two garbage cans. The people that don't have two garbage cans are going to pay because the rates are going to go up. They track these garbage cans. That man picks up two cans, they track it.
And he'll call us. He calls us and asks us if they have two. And I let him know. We even ask the workers to check on that if they see a place that's got two that's been. Most of them, that happens. They pay for them.
Yeah, we paid for two.
They can pay, you can pay for it.
A lot of people do, but are we sure?
Believe me, Mr. James Watson from Wayfair, he will call us if there's two cans and it's not in.
Or they have one or two, or they pay him for two or one.
That's right. He will call us.
The only other thing I got, is I've had fire hydrants, yes, for about two years now. And you got some fire hydrants, one on Main Street you can't even see. And there's one on, close to Miss Lauren, that you almost can't even see. And you got fire hydrants that are, do not work. I don't, I don't know. Jason may not know about it because they were before his time. There's one at the elementary school, used to be bagged. And the one right by the library, used to be bagged. And the bags are still laying around the bottom. So that tells me they're not, they haven't been repaired. No doubt Jason knew about it.
I know the fire chief went around and checked fire hydrants at one time, but I don't, he's not here to, to, to verify which ones was working and which ones was not working.
Are you saying that you had one and it's disassembled?
He got run over. We called him.
That's, that was last year, wasn't it?
Probably a year and a half, two years ago.
Remember when that happened? I didn't realize it hadn't knocked anyone but that.
I mean, I mean, it, it would bother me if my house caught on fire and it burned down because there wasn't a fire hydrant there.
Yeah, I know that.
I remember the accident that took it out.
Yeah, we hit about five o'clock in the morning. We said it was working. It sparked up on the fire hydrant.
I can get with Shaq and ask him about which ones are not working and, and we can go from there.
They do need to be, I know Stephen had brought it to my attention for me to tell the council last week that when he was mowing, that there were several that you couldn't even see. And so they wouldn't have access to get to them if they didn't even.
I mean, they've got access. They might not know, see them, know where they're at.
Well, that's what I mean. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to find it.
The only other thing here is I would check with the county on whether we had on, on abandoned houses at all.
I've not seen anything. I don't understand why the, I, I still don't understand why the city can't. I know the city can't take care of it.
We, we had a meeting with the county about code enforcement. Basically, to be honest with, county can't do anything either. They take them in front of a magistrate and they keep taking them in front of a magistrate and they could put a lien against them.
But the citizens don't actually have to do anything with property. They can choose to just leave it the way it is and keep piling out fees.
Yeah. And if they're not going to sell the property, they just are getting liens. But we, but we assess the, the cost of the magistrate every time we go.
The county's not getting any, anything cleaned up. That's not why I'm here.
I'm not saying they're not getting anything cleaned up. I'm saying that when we met with them for them, for us to go under their code enforcement, they pretty much told us that it was a nightmare.
At this time, but also we had the attorney looking into, because when we go, when we go with that, we have to adopt. They want us to adopt their specific. This is not the ones that we have, which the one we have is 49 years old. So it needs to be updated anyway. But am I right, Michelle?
Yes.
Did the, did the city of Washington just develop one?
They did. With the county?
They just.
With the county, I guess, applied it on four or five pieces of property.
But again, they had to do the same thing that we're being asked to do. They, they had to go change their ordinances. That's what she's been working on.
It's not a difficult issue. It's just got to be done.
Yes, sir. I understand that. That's why we went and met with the county. Candace can tell you. And I told you previous at the meeting what they told us. We've not given up on it, but at the time that we met with them, they were having a hard time themselves.
So, because the county's having a hard time and doesn't everybody abide by it.
Well, are they putting liens on the property?
That means the city's not going to have to join in with the county.
No, that's not what we were saying. What we were saying was, our attorney suggested that when we do that, that they had said that we had to set up paperwork to go along with that.
When did the city think we could start opening cities?
I'm not sure.
We'd start them as soon as possible.
On the ordinances? It's been a long time since I looked at them, but I would think I started drafting them, but then.
I thought that you were working on, but you, you still had to meet with the county on some of the paperwork, I think, the last time we discussed it.
I want to say we got the ordinances drafted and we were to the stage of discussing the interloble between the city and the county. And then the cost to the city was pretty substantial. And the last time we went with them, they were supposed to send us a copy of what they were going to be charging us and I haven't seen anything.
Well, that was pretty much when we met with them. Like I say, they, they were having some issues themselves with that council. Maybe Tracy could get up with them and see if they could send that to you.
I said, oh my God, I appreciate it very much. I hate to keep coming to see you.
Keep coming.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give you my seat. I'm gonna give you my seat.
No, you're not.
I, I take it for you, I would.
Public participation, Mr. Fred and Ms. Elizabeth Smith.
Hello.
Hi, Smith.
Guess I gotta go over here, huh? I can't remember what day it was. Whenever Hurricane I came through, tornado, hurricane, when it came through, it knocked over a couple of trees down where I live. I live off of Traverse, Traverse Road. Guy got the property from Judge, or not Judge, Coach Todd, right? He informed me that he always turned off the water every day just in case something happened. I've been doing that. Then in a hurry to get out because of the storm with my kids. And as trees, a couple of trees fell, I neglected to turn the water off. Then I end up getting a 40,000 gallon of water going.
He has water. He does not have a separate tank or he does not have the city sewer service.
So we don't have any paperwork on us, though?
No, we don't.
So what do you know?
I have a bill.
That's all that I have is that.
My bill's been running, you know, 1149 and 1436. And that's one I got was 150.
But I'm not going to take a meter and thing.
And it's hard to turn the meter off because it's on, it's not sitting straight up and down where you can just reach and turn it. It's at a, I would say more than a 45 degree angle. So it's hard to root anyway as this. But it's hard to even turn, turn it on and off. I got a speaker up stuck in there right now so I can pry it because it turns that hard.
Can I ask, are you, you turn it off every time you leave the house? Is that what?
I have that, yeah. Except for that day. And then it flooded.
But why, why are you turning it off now? Because if you're not using the water, it's not.
Well, when I'm, when I'm down there and I want to have some water, you know, for washing my hands and whatnot, I need to have the water, but.
It shouldn't use any water if there's not a leak?
Yeah.
If it's turned on, it shouldn't use any water whatsoever?
It doesn't. But when the tree fell over, it broke the pipe.
Okay. That's what we were getting at. We didn't know where the water was coming from.
No, no, the tree, when it, it just broke the pipe.
Okay.
And hence that's why I said, I always turn off the water except for that day. I was in a hurry getting, getting out and then three trees down on Paradise Drive and there was the one big one that fell right in Big Oak Pine Tree. Took out all the power back there on Traverse. And I actually drove through my neighbor's gate, opened his gate up, go through his yard and out through his second gate. I can't remember his, but he's directly right beside.
But the leak's fixed now?
Yeah. Yeah, it's been. Once I got down in there and I seen water gushing out, I turned it right off.
Did you call the city?
No. I told them the water.
I called the city.
I called the city.
So, did they go out and check it and see if there was verified leak or?
How did you speak with them?
I don't remember calling. The only thing I, she said she called a couple of weeks ago when they found the leak. I, I guess and asked what, what happens when there's a leak. I said, well, if I, if she asked me, I would have said it would have to be verified. But I don't recall her even calling them. She came in today with the bill and said it got busted off or the line got busted or something. And I said, we don't adjust, we can't adjust water. We only adjust sewer. See, they have no sewer service, so we, we don't generally, so she'd have to come to a meeting to get the water.
It would have to be their line that busted for it to be on, all that water to go through the meter.
When I called, I was told that there was nothing we could do until the bill was generated. And that's why I didn't do anything until I got the bill in the mail and came in. And then this meeting just happened to be later in the day. But yeah, they just said that, you know, until the bill is generated, we don't know what you've used. And then she, she said, but you don't, you don't have no sewer on your bill, so we can't adjust anything. And then, so she told me I'd have to come here today to ask for it to be adjusted. But yeah, I don't actually even believe the tree itself broke the line. We think it's when the electric company finally cut the tree to get it off the lines. There what came up. He turned it off at the meter and he didn't have it fixed like that same day because it was already off at the meter. But he actually had to use his excavator because you couldn't even see the leak. Like he seen water. He thought at first he thought it was a spring. I remember him sitting at the kitchen table going, we have, we must have a spring right there. And in fact, he had already turned it off because he seen something going on. I remember him telling me, he's like, wait a minute, now I have to dig that up. And he went out there with his excavator and dug it up and fixed it. He went right into, because the local hardware store was closed that day. And he's like, they had no reason to be closed. He went all the way into Bonifay, bought everything, went back and fixed it. I mean, he's got the receipt from going to Bonifay too, to show that he fixed it that same day. I mean, it really was a leak. We did not use 40,000 gallons of water.
No, ma'am. I understand that. I think, and I, like I say, I don't know who you talk to and they don't remember, but generally we, if there's a leak, we just sewer. But in your case, you don't, you don't have it, so.
Going to be base stuff off of previous bills and usage stuff, a little.
All of that water went through your meter? And typically what goes through your meter, we go in for?
Yeah, even, even in the hurricane or metropoic depression, that.
We adjust sewer.
I understand that.
Do we not do it one time a year?
It's typically only.
It's just for sewer?
Well, this is kind of a.
You can come down and check. I ain't got no swimming pool.
As I understand, I'm just. Send somebody out to look, make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be, that there's no leaks and put it on the agenda. Because it would be, we'd have to vote on it. It's not something that we can just solve tonight.
We don't vote on workshop tonight, so it'll be.
I got a video of the meter.
Our regular.
We believe you. Would they just get voted on tonight?
It's just procedural. We generally send somebody out to look at it, make sure that there's any, anything on that.
Could you fix it? Make it up, straight up and down? Or do you guys do that? Or?
When the guy comes out and talks, let him mind his own.
Well, he'll at least tell us what we're dealing with if it's something that was pretty.
When the guy comes out and checks, he will help send somebody else. Explain then what's your problem and he might fix it.
Okay.
So our next meeting is?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth?
Hello.
Hi, Trevor. Great.
At five thirty. And you wouldn't necessarily have to be here for that one day. By that point, we'll have somebody have went out there and looked at it.
I, I do have a thing that I want to mention. At five o'clock on the fifteenth, late fees are assessed. And our meeting's not till the eighteenth. I don't think they should have late fees assessed on the fifteenth if, if.
We'll just, we'll just pay it and then if everything's fixed, they can just credit. I mean, that's not a problem. I mean.
But I still don't think late fees should be assessed.
Well, I don't either, under the circumstances.
Is everybody in agreement on that?
Yes.
So.
But I'm just mentioning it and then on, at the, at the meeting, y'all can adjust those off if that's how you want to do it. But I just want to bring it to your attention now.
Okay, so we'll have somebody go out, deal with it, and then it'll be brought at the next meeting. We should know what went on and make sure that the meter's okay. You said it's sitting correct anyways, so they need to look at that.
It's like the little pots. It's like, it's like, it's like that.
I'll put that in the work order to check on that as well.
And just out of curiosity, you live there?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that explains the turning off and off because I couldn't grasp why.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's just. Fish and property.
Okay.
Well, that's too much to live there.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mitt. We'll deal with that. We have the meeting.
Thank you. Randall Gardner. Good evening, everybody. I'm Randall Gardner. I'm general manager, co-owner of Holston and Garner IT, who is actually the company who gets the opportunity to take care of your guys' IT services here at the city of Vernon. So what I just found today to tell you guys is that we're seeing a huge increase in cyber attacks. No business is too small and the warmization is too small. And so as your IT expert, kind of my job to make sure that you guys are aware of those things. Basically, there's a couple of, you know, recent stories. We had a report that we had sent out. I don't know if we were able to get that to everybody, Tracy. Couple of pages. I know it's probably some good nighttime reading because it's relatively boring. But that starts to set up the story of some of the stuff that we've seen up until order this year when we wrote that report. We're still seeing in our area multiple hacks a week, basically, through various means. And they're pretty expensive to remediate, 10,000 of dollars. So again, as your IT expert, I wanted to come bring this to your attention. I can sit here and talk for the better part of an hour about all the things that I've seen. I don't know that that's best use of our time. But basically just be here as your expert to let you guys ask questions. Got to go from there. I'm not a sales guy. I just do the best I can with what we all can put our heads together. Obviously, I, well, maybe you don't know, I, Vernon, got from way back, so just like the opportunity to serve you guys. And just want to bring this issue to your attention.
I have a question.
Come on.
You're all, you're already servicing Vernon.
Yes, ma'am.
And so with the issues that have come up of late, you're asking us to look into, you're doing updates
There's.
on what's in place here to protect us from being hacked?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, is it that a service that you already provide?
There are updated services that are better suited to protect you against the modern attacks over the last two years. Bad guys have gotten a little smarter. They've changed their tools and their tactics. So we have some updated services to prevent, protect you from those types of attacks.
But we just started with y'all, like in the last few months. So that, right?
No, ma'am. It was, they're talking around Hurricane Michael, so it's been roughly three years.
They were here before I got here.
Right, but we just did the whole 400 something dollars a month thing just a few months ago, right?
It's been about a year.
Y'all, I don't have a time concept, but I'm still saying that's not that long ago.
That was part of my question was, if we're already paying for the service to be protected, why are, why do we need to pay more?
You're paying for an older version of the service. We just onboarded these new services just this summer. This, again, exponential increase of attacks. The federal government's saying that we're looking at a $20 billion a year industry with these cyber attacks. That's 57 times more than what it was just three years ago. So why would we need more if we're only working together? I thought we had three years. I thought we talked about sometime after Hurricane Michael.
We started talking about it then, but we, do you remember how long ago we signed the contract?
We, there actually made a service for about.
Just that guy?
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was in this current budget that we're in, that we approved it.
I thought you were talking about how long they've been.
Yeah, but that's what's bothersome is that that's outdated and we need something better.
Yeah, I mean, it's bad guys. It's, I didn't undersell you something a year ago. I'm here to tell you that the attacks are increasing and that there are more things that you could do. That's simply the, the gist.
But that are not, that are not offered in what the plan that we have, right?
And you know, we went with like the basic plan whenever we started.
It's not been that long. I mean, it's been this past budget year.
Yeah, it's been.
But we don't have any more in our budget to, to go up anywhere.
And we also did not budget it. Well, from my understanding from paperwork, what we approved, there wasn't that much in there for that at this time. So.
Yeah, I understand. I appreciate all the citizens. I know you guys have a laundry list of stuff that you're working on, right? I, I manage a small business. I know that IT is only one leg and a stool of all things that I. So again, I'm not here to sell you anything. I'm here to make sure that you're aware, to bring evidence, to bring expertise, to bring loyalty, to bring data to you guys. That's really all. If I was wanting to upgrade and sell you stuff, I'd have had proposals in front of you. I don't think there's a proposal really one in front of you other than maybe an assessment. Because again, the federal government's not just talking about if you get hacked. They're talking about when. And now they've talked about from cyber defense to cyber resiliency. How well are you going to respond and bounce back from when a hacker takes over your email server or encrypts all your data and you can't get to it? So again, I'm just trying to, you know, make some information you know. It's not a, it's not an easy overnight decision for sure. Just want to make sure that as your IT expert, I'm doing my part here too, to keep you guys in the loop.
Yes, Mr. Gardner, I appreciate that. Had in the, and I don't have anything here, but I know I had in the last pack and I don't have it with me. Was there a prospect in, because what I saw, there was a lot of information, but there wasn't any. I don't remember seeing anything as far as what kind of cost would be incurred on these updates that you're talking about.
Yeah, so right, to the point. I'm either the crappiest sales guy in the world or I'm genuinely not trying to sell you anything. So the first thing that I would even begin to talk to you about was, we have a document, I think it might be in that bundle called a cyber action plan. It's basically an assessment to understand what policies and procedures and things you have in place, to understand what are the, what are the risks you meet to the city of Vernon? And what are the impact if those risks were able to be taken advantage of? Because I could come in here and just give you a laundry list of everything that we sell. You're going to look at a price without understanding what that is and why it's important to you and you're going to turn it down. I've been doing this for 25 years, right? That just, I run a business. Somebody walks in and just gives me a price without explaining it to me, I'm going to turn it down. So I don't have any prices other than that cyber action plan. And if that document's in there, that was 18. And if that document's in there, that was eighteen sixty, one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Again, a full assessment of your organization to look at policies, procedures, technical controls, employee training, so on and so forth, to help us identify where a risk and where an impact. And then before I propose any other solutions, you're going to know what you need to protect potential losses. I can't do that for you.
Okay, so you're saying in order to be able to tell us what it's going to cost us to update, it's going to cost us eighteen hundred and sixty dollars for you to find that?
That would have been my first safe recommendation, right, was the Cyber Action Plan, that's right.
Do you do a backup daily?
It's not like that. We do several.
But y'all have a, a, a separate file, none of the computer, a-
It's on the server, not on our computers.
Does the city have a, a policy or procedure that would dictate how that backup needs to be scheduled? Where it needs to be stored? How fast it would need to be restored in case something happened?
I can tell you that we can't leave courses unattended in the city square. So that's about how updated our policies are.
Right.
So there's probably not one on that. I'm just saying. No, I, I don't think we have a policy. But i- if she's doing an update daily, I mean, a backup daily?
There's several depending between each function.
There may need to be a hard backup though, not just on the server in case the server's hacked.
Okay, just file that away so in case we get...
Okay, but we're saying right now, and we appreciate you being here and informing us, but we're, we don't have any money in our budget for it.
Sure, sure.
I'm not, I don't know any other nice way to say it. That's the Vernon way. I'm going to tell you.
I'm not offended. Come on, sister. No, no, again, I, from, so, this is coming a lot of ways from federal government too, right? There's even towns in Washington County who's being asked for paperwork if they want to continue to receive grants and federal funding. It's coming through contracts for non-document contractors. And I, and I, again, I do this, cut over a hundred clients, right? I just don't have the money to do this now. I get it. I would just also have you guys think about them, and I'm not trying to be smart-eyed or anything else. But, you know, if we get ransom tomorrow and it costs the, the city twenty thousand dollars, where does that money come from? It's, it's a hard juggle. I, I get it, but it's real and I'm just getting-
As well, because I think that there's probably coverage for that.
Two degrees.
And then the chicken or the egg is, is that cyber insurance is going to look to see what kind of policies, procedures, technical controls, training you had, and if you aren't doing those things, they're going to say, hey, this wasn't just an accident that you were doing your due diligence to prevent, you will willfully neglect, and they're not paying claims, and we're seeing that too. So again, just another difficult ball we're on here.
We've seen a lot of things come to Vernon, so I'm not going to say that it's not going to happen. As for me right now, I don't think that it's, that it's something that we can do, but I'm only one member of the council, y'all.
That's what we're talking about.
Do some more research on it, look at the paperwork more.
He said the Florida Legacies, which is what Becky had just-
Yes.
Yeah.
Contact them and find out what we do, what we have and don't have.
Yeah, and I'm at your disposal. I'm working, again, ten people work together. We're your IT guys. So, whatever questions, whatever meetings, whatever information that we can help you guys with, that's what we're here for.
Well, we appreciate it, Mr. Garner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kevin Reyes.
Yes, ma'am. How are y'all doing today?
Fine.
I'm a little run tire, brain getting a little stoned off, to be honest. Our wrestling season's getting started. I think y'all know about this. I don't know if some of y'all know, but I don't know. We're looking for a place to practice. Last winter, we practiced, and this is a youth program from five to fifteen, the kids we usually teach here. And last winter, it's cold, we practiced in a pole barn in, in Sunny Hills. And we don't want to do that again because that was cold. And the boys still tucked it out, and they did fantastic through the season, but we, we'd rather not have, have a new team. So, we're looking to have a, a big routine this year. Last year, we had, I think, finish the season with twelve kids. We're looking to push in that to twenty, twenty-four kids this season. We've got more mats, all that stuff is ready to go. We just need, we'd like to have an indoor space. Now, we've looked around at some of the rooms that you guys have here and whatnot. There's one here in the old cafeteria. I think they do a Zumba class over there, and there's a room next to that. It's a great size for us to use if it's not preoccupied and I'm not. Also, the old gym is open. I don't know who uses that, what they do with that. But if it's a space that we could lay some mats out and let these boys roll around and practice on, it'd be great. The main issue, we're not picky about what it looks like or what it is. These are wrestlers. They're tough kids. They, the grumier the better for them, and they like it. What we're looking for honestly is money. This is a different program from football, and it doesn't happen. Mats, we just bought a thousand dollars of beef, so we're, we're, we needed the space for the mats for the kids, so we had no kids. So if there's a fees involved, if, if they could be a minimum, that's fine. Please, help us out. Or if not, I mean, that would be, do better. But like I said, we're just looking, I'm just scared to ask for if there's a space we can use in, in, in town somewhere. Preferably one of the two we've looked at here, but if there's another space, if I have a mind, I'm all ears.
Are you talking about the weight room that's beside the community?
No, ma'am, not the weight room. The one that has the weights-
Dressing room.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was a dressing room for pageants and whatnot, or the mayor dresses and then not-
It, it was a weight room.
Was it a weight room?
This is the weight room.
He was in school and, and previous.
I, I'm sorry, y'all. I didn't go to school here. I live in Marianna. Forgive me for that one too, all right?
We're talking about the pageant dressing room.
It's the pageant dressing room.
Is that big enough?
For the mats we have now is actually just the right size. I think we can roll out all four of our mats right there.
Let me ask you-
It'll be a little crowded when, when the boys get in there, but they're fine with that. It's fine.
And this really doesn't have anything to do with space, but I'm curious. Is this in with the same league that we're in with?
It is. Washington County Dolphins runs this program. With this particular part of it though, we, we are not partnering with the city with a record partner in this one. We haven't talked about that. It hasn't been discussed at all. And the season's getting started. It's kind of a little late at this point to really work out that kind of a deal.
Where, where do you compete at?
It varies. We go to a lot of tournaments all over the state of Florida, up in Alabama, occasionally below the Jordan.
You don't do any local?
There aren't any local tournaments. We do some in Panama City. They have some, some of the, there's not a lot of youth programs that do wrestling, and that's the thing. We're trying to build that up in the area, and it is coming along. Bay County has got a few programs that are going right now, and they're building. They all have wrestling in their high schools. For whatever reason, Holmes and Washington don't have wrestling in their high schools. Marianna does, and all the other counties do, but they don't here. And we're trying to change that.
We used to, but-
Coach Tranquil is trying to bring it back. I've been working with Coach Tranquil. He wants to do that next year. He's on board to start a wrestling program here. And we're going to take the kids, the older kids we have this year, and feed them right into his road. So, that's what we're trying to do. But like I said, we just want to get out of the cold weather, so it's just-
I'm all about helping the kids, and I think everybody else is too. My only concern would be that the county is part of the insurance.
We can take care of that, actually.
We're due for you, but- If the program has a policy and they can name the city as an additional insurance-
Absolutely. That's, our program is insured with AAU, that's the Amateur Athletic Union. And our membership ensures us as well as, we can name anyone, even multiple municipalities on it. We just need to get the information, which I could get from Tracy at some point, and we can put that on.
Okay, we need that room for some of that kid, because-
Okay, yes, ma'am. We can roll those mats up in just a matter of minutes, and we can pop out.
Like, is there certain days a week?
Yes, ma'am. Typically, we like to practice three days a week, the way we do football. We don't practice on Friday nights, because usually we travel to tournaments and for Saturday morning tournaments, because we can always work. So we let the boys rest on Friday and travel. So usually it's Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. I know the Zumba class over here, I think they do it Tuesday and Thursday.
Same Thursday.
So we, in that particular room, we wouldn't be bothering them. I, I hope we wouldn't bother them. But they certainly wouldn't be bothering us, so. If, if that was okay with them, everybody's kosher. We don't want stepping in anybody's tent.
They should be completely separated. I mean, they are, they just would use the front door, that would be it, and the back room.
Yeah, exactly. Our parents might have to sit out in that courtyard, the ones that stay in, in wait, but other than that, we-
Plenty of chairs.
Right. And again, like I said, the old gym over there, if, if we're out of the way of that roof, that's fine with us too. We don't really care. We just need a, a nice little twenty by forty space for the kids to roll the mats out, and that's really all we need.
Question.
Well, the gym's not accessible, right?
We don't think, we, the gym is-
Well, I showed him both, and the reason we haven't really been opening gym is because of the couple of leaks that we have on the floor. But with the size he's talking about taking up, those leaks aren't going to affect him at all. So I believe we've discussed options to get in there and get that hallway and go ahead and get that hallway. We were waiting on the roof, but we can go ahead and get the hallway and the bathroom cleaned up, so we can use the bathroom, and then they can use a section of that gym. It would take a little bit of time to get there.
Our wrestling coach is Coach Calvin, and he's already agreed that the first week of practice or so has to be a cleanup party. That's, we'll do that, if it's, if it helps us get in a space, we're, whatever we can do.
I have a little bit of concern about that though, just if, if it does rain and there's leaks and the kid goes over here and they slip and they fall down, that, just, I don't-
And the fact that we're still trying to open that.
Yeah, we're not opening up to the-
Right.
To the public to play. I would rather if we're going to open it up, it, it's free access to everybody personally, just my opinion.
If it makes, I understand that. If it makes you upset, we, the pole barn is in leak on us too. As long as our mats are, we're going to get it.
But if there's a room that is easily heated, rocks out of bathroom-
Accessible. The weight room, he said.
Yeah, it's good to go.
That room would be better. Now, I'll, I'll have to say, I had to take the fit measure of that room. I know it's big enough for the mats. I don't know if, we may have to move one of those dressing tables or something. Kind of rearrange a little bit or something.
Can take it out of there. I can probably still.
Yeah, anything, those mats are really lightweight. They roll up really quick. And when we did it last year, we couldn't leave them out in that pole barn because it was a public park, right? They would be gone the next day. So we had, we'd roll them up every night, take them across the street to the, the community center over there, and we stored them in their back room. And then every night, we'd bring them back out and roll them. So-
Where, is there room, well, I guess, except for when there's a pageant that we've been arranging for?
They can leave the mats down, right?
Yeah, we can leave them lay down. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, we'll probably, probably go ahead and empty that room. And even including the mirrors in the dresser, just slide them out the back towards the locker room, the locker rooms. Just they ride through the door. That way the, we don't have anything that, they are kids wrestling. So there are mirrors there, so we'll probably just go ahead and get those out of there just so we don't have to worry about them.
Close enough so when there's a pageant, they can be eased like this back.
Five minutes and that room set back up.
Yeah, and our boys will do it. It's, the more work we can make them do, the better fit they'll be for the term.
One more question for me, is would there be a rental fee or would that be private?
Honestly, that's our biggest concern, and that's-
That's what he was asking for, was the free space.
We would, we'd love if you guys could help us, because honestly, this program doesn't have any money, because like I said, it doesn't make any money.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, I think it's a great idea as, as for me, as long as there's a strategic coverage provided.
Absolutely. I think that's all.
And the dates that you're going to be, that you're going to be there, I'm not asking for that, because we can't, we have to vote on that at the next meeting. But I'm just saying, as for me, as long as strategic coverage is provided, the mirrors and everything are put in a place where, when there's a pageant, they can, you know, be put back. And you said Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, that's going to mean some, they'll kind of pick up the key or something. It wouldn't affect the pageant. No, because we're always on the cans. Pageant could be on the side of the- Well, I know that's what I'm saying, but I'm talking about moving back of the dressing tables or mirror when there are pageants.
And if there is one slash number, it is, and like I said, we'll be happy to, you'll never know when we were there.
But otherwise, you can leave your pads right there, so you don't have to haul them in and out.
That'd be nice.
I say put it on the agenda. Yeah, agreeable. And it be free.
It's the same kids that we play, that play in our programs across our sports.
Yeah, all the kids are coming from the, mostly Washington County area. As I said, we're down here, a lot of them come here. Our coach lives down in, in Callaway. A couple of kids, he already coaches, will be coming up to our program too. And like I say, Coach Tranquil is probably going to put a few of his high schoolers, the, the ones that are under fifteen, the middle school kids, probably encourage them to join. So most of the kids are from this, from right here.
Well, we're, we're all about kids.
Future goal is to have a tournament here as well.
Absolutely, yeah. We want to have a tournament here. Tournaments are, are a big thing. If they come from, we'll get kids from South Florida, North Alabama, Tennessee. We'll get them all along. We get two hundred and fifty kids in that high school gym over there. Have a nice big tournament for this year.
Well, and at some point, our gym is going to be the, hopefully, the place.
That'll be great, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, sir.
Number three, Foster Polley News Article.
I will address this one. It was brought to my attention that either Thursday, the Sept-, no, I'm sorry, September the third, that a news article was placed, and part of it had some private health information in it, and I did not appreciate that. It was often posted to Facebook. Didn't appreciate that either.
I'm not here to talk about Foster Polley News.
I understand that.
So why are you looking at me?
And it brought to everyone's attention. Well, you're in charge of Foster Polley News?
No, ma'am.
Okay, let me, let me just step in here real quick and say that I went and looked at the video. It was discussed in an open meeting, so it, it was going to be on video.
I reviewed that video and never saw anything about that.
You never saw? I watched it today.
I watched it and did not see anything about that.
Well, I can tell you. In just a minute. That's number five.
I feel like-
It was at the end of the meeting, at like, the meeting was like thirty-six minutes long. It was a very short mention of the fact that you were out with an illness and that you were going to be, going to test for COVID. And it was very brief, and it was just something that was said at, right at the end of the meeting. But it was in there, and it, it wasn't that anybody was trying to put your business out there.
Well, I wasn't the only one that was mentioned in that article either.
Okay, so- I, like I said, I reviewed, I watched the video twice today.
Well, I honestly may have been the one that said it because I was asking forgiveness for Michelle having to do everything that week.
And it was, it was, it was not anything derogatory or anything that was, anybody was trying to put any, any business out there.
Still nothing that should have been published anywhere without someone's permission.
Well, if, if that's the case, half of what we talked about should go on here, because we're in an open meeting. There's a lot of things that were said that may not be, may not need to be said.
Michelle was, how does that work?
Well, it could be a HIPAA issue if the medical information wasn't obtained as a part of appointment.
Basically, and I don't know if any of the rest of y'all have watched the video. Basically, it was the mayor and the deputy clerk just in a discussion about what had been going on.
Right.
And people been out, and it was just, it was just mentioning-
Was that after the meeting or was that during the meeting?
It was, it was right as the meeting was about to close. It was like, I thought it ran down, because I figured that nobody had been watching.
The only thing on the tape is gabble to gabble.
Yeah.
We don't run anything before or after the gabble.
It was thirty-six minutes, so it was right at, right before thirty-six minutes of that meeting, and it was the September the second meeting. And it was just a brief. It wasn't anything derogatory, or it wasn't like anybody was trying to badmouth anybody or anything. I understand.
I'm not even saying it wasn't, but that was HIPAA. And if it was discussed at a public meeting, it should not have been. Then I'm, I'm going to have to take responsibility for that because I was, I think I was asking everybody to be kind to Michelle because you were out, and I didn't want, I didn't, I didn't want her to get a hard time for not having everything together.
Oh, Jason, you better be getting her. Chad Taylor. What was that?
Chad Taylor was also mentioned.
In the newspaper also. I got a phone call from my house about it. From somebody that has nothing to do with the city, telling me, what's this about Tracy and Chad Taylor? I seen it on Foster Polley's. I don't even look at Foster Polley's, so I had to go look it up and I got it.
So did I violate HIPAA by saying that she was going to get tested?
Not necessarily.
Okay. And I apologize. I, I didn't make a third of your business out there. I actually didn't even think about it until today that, that we had discussed it, but then I remembered that, that I had said that. If that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Because I haven't watched the video. I'm here, so I don't go home and watch them.
Well, I, I, I'm going to tell everybody that's in this room that all, we know that all these videos are not only taped, but that these videos, these meetings are taped, and now they're on video, and it would do everybody good. I know it's been doing me some good to go back and watch them. Everybody should watch. And it would do everybody good. I know it's been doing me some good, go back and watch them. Everybody should watch, and see what's been said, and how, um, people are reacting, especially over the last couple of months. It's beneficial that everybody take the time when they can, whenever, and, and watch them.
From my perspective, for those who aren't aware, there's no reasonable expectation of privacy in a public meeting, absolutely none. And if a newspaper, as she points out, or Foster Folly, or whomever publishes what was done in the public portion of a public meeting, that's, that's simply public record at that point. Understand hurt feelings, I understand that if the only tool you've got is a hammer, everything starts looking like a nail, but it is what it is.
All right, does anybody else have anything to say on that? Number four, Vernon Family Dollar major development review.
This is basically all of the information that I have received from the county. Um, they don't have all of their meetings done. When they get through with their meetings, then they're gonna come in and visit the council as well.
Well, they can have a night free department, trying to read that map.
Well, I thought they were actually gonna be here.
No, no, I can't see it. This is just for information for the next meeting when they are.
I've looked over.
I can't see it. People looking in the bathroom.
Are they coming to the next meeting?
I don't know if they'll be.
It looks like they're gonna.
Don't get up plenty more than that.
Probably about thirty parking.
Are they discussing how the time's meant?
I think there's plenty more than that.
So what now?
So they may be at the next meeting.
Oh, you're planning, did you?
Because they have a pay board.
Well, at least, we know what it is.
Well, I was up there.
I know.
Yeah, well, I'm seeing, I understand what they say, it's a family dollar, what is the dollar to you now?
It's culmination of their, their.
So which ones it gonna be, Dave?
A family dollar tree.
Your side or your grandma's side?
Well, they, they.
I didn't know if everything's gonna be a dollar when I go in there. That's important.
That's what I'm saying, that's what it is.
Dollar Tree bought Family Dollar, uh, recently, relatively recently. And the reason I know that is because Family Dollar's our client.
Okay.
And they are now under the same umbrella, and we have to run both logos at the same time, but Dollar Tree bought Family Dollar, essentially.
Really?
And this one is.
It happened several years ago.
So, okay.
When we originally called it.
Not the Saff.
I'm sorry. No, 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 they're, they're, they're run totally separately, but they're owned by the same company. Dollar Tree actually owns Family Dollar.
Family store that we're gonna, they're talking about, no, is that, this gonna be?
I thought it was Family Dollar, I may be wrong.
I do too.
I'm pretty sure it's just Family Dollar.
Family Dollar, that's what I'm thinking.
They've, they've started to expand into the small store market, like going up against Dollar General, obviously.
You don't put each other out of business?
Well, no.
What they're hurting is Walmart and some of the big box stores.
I just mean if we get three dollar stores.
You'd be surprised, it's actually, it's a good thing for them all.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, they was saying that, I was looking at TV, and they was saying that more people are shopping at Dollar Tree, I mean, at those dollar stores now, because they're so big and so huge.
And they're convenient.
And they're convenient, instead of going to big stores, they're going to these dollar stores that has all the stuff in them, you know, they're well priced.
It's worth the extra price not to have to deal with Walmart sometimes.
Yeah, I don't go unless I have to.
That's what they were saying, more people are shopping there. Maybe that's why they see the market.
This store is a good thing for Vernon, pure incentive.
Oh, I'm loving that, that it's actually starting to happen now. I mean, we've got three pieces of property right now that are all under contract. I believe, I might mean saying that wrong, but I think we've got three commercial pieces under contract right now.
I know, of two, and, and we were told that there was a third, but nobody's come to us yet.
Well, that'd be this one, SAP, and.
The Basel property.
The Basel property.
SAP, did they ever decide on anything there?
Uh, the SAP property is under contract, uh, from what I was told, but I can't verify that.
That's jobs for people right here where they don't have to drive somewhere, too.
All right, does anybody have anything else on that? I, I guess Tracy, you'll let us know when they, let you know, when they're gonna be here. All right, number five, June twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes. Has anybody listened to the tape or watched the video of that meeting? I know you brought it up before, and Joey said that he had not, he's not here tonight, but I believe that him and Ms. Quinn said that y'all would, because it was, those are the meetings, you have them in front of you. The number four is the one that I had asked about being changed, and I asked everybody to look at it before we decided to pass these minutes. And the reason being, if you look at that page, there's only four items. One, two, and three are worded very differently on how the motions were made, that were specific to what the motion was. Number four, however, was not on the employee raises. It says after a detailed discussion, council agreed to give the guys a raise. And that part in quotations, but, again, I have been studying the video, public record meetings, and exactly what was said, and it was at, for anybody that wants to, y'all need to watch it, I would suggest, but, um, at minute seven forty-one through thirty minutes and forty-five seconds, um, the guys was never the turn all the, it was the guys who worked outside, streets only, street people, guys that worked outside. And the motion itself was, I requested for a raise for the Public Works Director, Chad, in the new position, and that was approved. The way that this number four is worded is, it needs to be changed, still in my opinion, I think everybody needs to listen to it, because the way that it's worded is not the way that it was done, and you know, we can all have our opinions on why it was done that way, but it needs to be, it needs to be corrected, in my opinion. And I, I'm not going to recommend that they be passed until it's, the whole thing is either verbatim, or it's corrected to state what the motion actually was, as it was in one, two, and three. I thought we fixed this already.
Now, everyone was supposed to review it.
And the motion is made shortly after seven forty-one? Seven minutes in?
Becky? That was when the discussion of number four started.
Mm-hmm.
And all of that runs through to about thirty, I wrote thirty, thirty minutes and forty-five in, but I think it was more like thirty-thirty, but that was the whole discussion timeline on number four.
But the.
It starts at seven forty-one.
Okay.
And that was on June twenty-eighth. Does anybody have anything that they want to say or discuss about this?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You, you pay us for public relations counsel, um, I would suggest that it's not a very expensive procedure to have the minutes, or the, the tape transcribed after each meeting. And then you've got your minutes, and you don't cherry pick what you decide to put in them and what you don't. Uh, and then you eliminate all controversies, because it's, it's verbatim. It's something you may want to consider. I know budget is the issue, and the last thing you want to see is another expense, but I think you'd be pleasantly surprised if you found out what it actually costs to have that done, so it's, it's an option, I'm just suggesting.
Do you have any recommendations of someone that does that?
I'll, I'll be glad to submit some to you.
I would appreciate that.
And, and that's a, yeah, and I don't know about the legality, the, the legal end of it, if you want to have a, a transcriptionist, a court transcriptionist, or somebody of that, I don't imagine you'd have to have it, because right now you've got somebody just listening to the tapes and, and picking out certain parts of it anyway, so we could find somebody with equal qualifications to be able to transcribe it verbatim.
There's probably software that does it.
Yeah, but it's not a hundred percent accurate, I just wouldn't want, wouldn't want you to hedge your bets again on that.
Reporters aren't either.
They're what?
Reporters aren't, aren't a hundred percent accurate either. Um, transcription is really not a bad idea, um, when we're looking at things from the standpoint of, um, ADA compliance. So that, it's not something that we have dealt with here in Vernon yet. Um, but as we continue to publish our meetings in multiple ways, we have to account for, um, you know, everyone's ability to, you know, to interact, and so, um, transcription's really not a, a bad idea at all.
Part of our effort to make the, the website ADA compliant was the tapes, and that way somebody who has sight impairment, they can listen to the, to the proceedings. So yes, I mean, and I, I agree a hundred percent, that would be the next step for somebody who's deaf or who has hearing problems, they can simply read the transcript.
And I know several people that, that don't come to the meetings, that, that actually watch the videos, and want to post them.
We can actually do closed caption to some extent, but that's, that's a little more expensive procedure too, so, but nonetheless, I mean, this puts you on the right track, as far as working in good faith for ADA compliance.
Hey, does anybody else have anything on that? Um, I, I, I would, I would appreciate it if everybody would, would watch at least that part of it, so you'll know what you're actually approving, and again, look at, at the way the rest of it was worded. I mean, basically, the minutes should say, you know, specifically what motion was made, not just a comment. In my opinion.
The other thing that you could consider doing is adding a, um, a disclaimer on your public notices, that, that the meeting minutes are not in transcription. Um, that they're just a summarization, um, just kind of a, just a disclaimer.
There's already a line that, there's already a line that is something to that effect that goes out on the agendas and, and minutes, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I, I saw that today when I was online on our side. All right, does anybody else have anything on that? Number six, Vernon Express Meter. Please tell me that that's what this picture is that I saw.
That is exactly what that picture is that you got.
Because I pulled this, and I said, okay, this is it.
So I'm glad we can all see the issue here. Yes, they concreted the meter.
I like to see this, oh, they put black sample of the meter.
A concrete.
They called it concrete down there.
Yes, ma'am. Jason went and talked to them, they are going to fix it, because Jason pretty much said, if you don't fix it, we will, and we will bill you for it.
They, I don't think they've had a fantastic crew to fix it for. I mean, Jason had marked off all the lines, and they busted lines right to start with, so.
So that they have agreed to fix it.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, Jason's whole thing was, whatever they said, we're gonna concrete it. Do not get in this box. You can see the form boards around it, and they just went right in it.
They make sure that the form boards are clear.
I know it was gone, because I, I watched somebody drive over it.
You did? I'm sorry, I seen one too.
That's, that's interesting. So I'm assuming that we're gonna have to.
We couldn't read the meter this, this month, so it's estimated. Yeah, whatever we got the meter reset, it's a meter under concrete. We were like, there's no way. They couldn't have.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
We got the picture to prove it.
Label this picture, so when I go back over it in a year, I will remember what it's.
Yes, ma'am. Vernon Express.
And they're gonna have to bust it.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
But they're gonna fix it all, so there's no expense to this issue.
Correct.
Now, wait a minute, what about the meter? They poured concrete on the meter, so.
They, they poured it on the lid. I guess we'll see when they do that.
You might want to make a note to have.
Jason to check out.
Somebody to look at it when they do that, because there may be a damaged meter that they have to pay for. Okay, number seven, Public Works Department laptop update.
We have ordered his laptop, it should be here this week.
So he found one and didn't need our approval or anything?
Correct, I think it was totaled four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
And it'll do what he needs it to do?
Yes, ma'am.
It did.
Why are you gonna show him how you put your work order zone there and everything?
He already knows how we put work orders on.
Yeah, he's already doing all that.
The one thing that I'm gonna have to go over is the, um, my sunshine, when he has to go do work days.
I'm sorry.
You said Public Works, that's Mr. Jason?
Yes, it is.
Now, that's another computer added to y'all's. Do we need to add that and secure it?
Y'all said yes.
But it only is in there, do we, I mean, we have to bet on that.
Yeah, you will.
While you're at it, fire department's got one as well?
Yes, they do.
We need to discuss that as well, and bring in their network under the fold as well.
And so there's gonna be an extra price for that, so you let us know what that's gonna be.
Let you know what it is, before next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
All right, number eight, Council Citizens Calling Employee Instead of City Hall.
We have had issues with, um, council members calling, Public Works, Street Department, for sewer backups, which has now led to customers calling them directly. So now we have customers calling, because, oh, well, I got their number over the weekend, and I'm having a problem on Monday during business hours, but I can just call them directly.
Which council member?
You are.
No, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I beg your pardon. I have not called them for nothing.
Never for a sewer backup?
I called, I called Michelle that day, the only sewer backup that I called for was at the restaurant.
There have been several that have been reported to me that were called directly to Public Works Department or Street Department.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so that, this email that we have in our packet.
Yes, ma'am.
About this was sent in in June. The attorney gave a response in June, and I think this is, I've seen, this is, I've had this in my packet, I don't think. So, have there been issues lately of that?
August, I think it was last time.
We just had one word for customer. Mr. Owens called. Jason couldn't get up with Jason for Ms. Minor's house, then called Chad. Chad was off. Then he called me.
Who was that?
Mr. Gary Owens. That was just the other day.
Because the only phone call that I've had was from John Hawkins, and John Hawkins, I told him to call the city hall to get with Jason. So if John Hawkins didn't call y'all, then I don't know what happened that day. That's the only person I've talked to.
But how is Gary Owens calling them, a council member calling?
No, this is a whole separate issue.
Calling, because he has their numbers.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we, the council can't help that he has their numbers.
We're talking about sewer backups from a while back.
So I guess.
Different instances, instances.
And the one that he called me about was the, uh, the alarm going off over there on that thing over there.
Did he have a phone line on that?
Nope.
Because I didn't hear from him on that.
I hear he's not asleep.
They have it over there by his daughter's house.
There's work getting done that we're not getting records, we don't have records of.
And that's an issue, because if someone calls them to say, hey, how many work orders have been placed because of sewer backups in the city limits, we can't tell them.
Okay, so we don't have anybody here from Public Works or Streets?
Yeah, we have a sewer backup.
Yeah, we have a sewer backup.
So I would think that this should be a discussion when
They're here.
they are here. And you're saying that you had the last
Just the other, just the other day.
And prior to that was an issue in August with a council member?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it was August.
Well, I'll say that we, um
I talked to Jason back, that I spoke with Jason. We are years superior, and if we see a problem, we should be able to call you. And they said no, ma'am.
Generally, it goes through City Hall. Now, I'll be honest with y'all, if I happen to drive by something and I see Jason and it's a danger, I'm going to say, Jason, I'll call City Hall and tell them that, but here it is.
I was told that I couldn't do that. Tracy told me that I couldn't do that. Because me and her did talk about that on the phone. And I told you, okay.
To my knowledge, I've not done that, but I'm not gonna tell y'all that if I see an emergency and I see him working, I'm gone. You know, don't just be mad.
He said the only thing he had against it is that he has had it happen when he would be there working on a project and somebody would come up really mad and would come to their house right there and work on something else. What do you do? You just tell them that I'm not there to think, I have to, I need to call City Hall.
Let's, when whichever one of them or both of them that's having to deal with that can be here, I say, you know, we can discuss it in a workshop or a meeting, whichever. I mean, otherwise it's just back and forth. And like I say, this one is from June. So we got an issue in August, and then we've got citizens calling. If they're calling, if the citizens are calling Jason and Chad, as much as they all meet up, they're really sorry.
I mean, my people are like, I know my phone number, but they call me.
In that instance, is say, okay, guys, if you get bombarded that directly to City Hall, we have work orders that we have to go by. But again, we need to discuss that in a minute.
I do have one other issue that Joey did call me, he told me he couldn't make it, and he asked me to bring it to everyone's attention, is Vernon Discount Drugs, they had a major leak yet again because apparently a big truck drove over their meter and busted a line. So Chad went down and thinks that we did adjust the bill, but apparently Chad put down some stakes or something, but Joey thinks maybe we need to put something bigger, harder to kind of help protect that meter. Because this is not the first time someone's backed over it and did not realize it and drove off.
So when do we adjust the bill?
We actually, we knew about the leak because it happened towards the end of September, or the beginning of September. So we were aware of this leak. So on the bill, if you'll look, I gave everyone that, the actual water usage is twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty gallons, but we averaged the sewer down to eight hundred and eighteen.
That was gonna say because they've got one bathroom in that whole place. That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
He put rebards and flag stuff around the meter is what it says.
But that's not gonna really stop it.
He says it's not stopping the semi, keep backing it over it.
So what's gonna stop it?
Brick wall?
Exactly. Maybe some concrete, I don't know. Something to think about?
Let me see, over there.
I'm sorry.
Is it a meter or a backload?
Say again?
Meter, backload.
I'm not sure if it's the meter or the backload.
I don't know a hundred percent, but I think he might have been making it back. And if y'all, if y'all drive by there and feel moved out there in the middle of nowhere, it's backload setting up. Now, they're close to the driveway, you'll see it setting up. It's not like it's up there close to the building.
It's in that little grassy area right there.
It's farther to the road than it is to the building.
Where are the big trucks parked?
Right.
Where anybody, anybody driving through there. I mean, it's been running over every time, just wanted to think it might be back.
They're backing up.
What do you suggest what we could put there to keep them from?
Four or six inch pipe, we'll see. But then you're gonna be hot, and somebody gets in on it.
Were that straight in?
To try to prevent one issue and create another one.
I mean, it was me, I moved back load, I did it. And I could have trapped right across there if I've other meters and be done with it.
That would probably be our safest bet.
But I'm sure it's gonna be difficult to move it.
I just want to see
I'll check with Jason.
See if we can look at it. All right, does anybody have anything else?
Yes, ma'am, my line, there's one more thing. We got this letter in the Malcolm Project graduation day, there wasn't a donation.
What did we do last year?
I was just fixing to say.
I believe last year we did fifteen hundred, but that was because of the pandemic. And I have the budget here, I think we budgeted for thirteen hundred for miscellaneous, which had guided towards the donation. I'm sorry, it's a thousand.
I can't see not giving what we're giving last year.
That's five hundred dollars, I wonder what was left.
Where is rope, Ken?
And we also give them the hallway for the haunted hallway, which they didn't have last year.
Well, take out five hundred out of my my checks and put it towards with that thousand for the next two months, please.
No, split that between me and her. Do you think you're beat?
Give all of mine.
And that'll be, um, five hundred.
I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting as well. For the thousand.
And it needs to be put on, I get, you need to put on there too that she and I are splitting. That's fifteen hundred, right? All right, do I have a message to adjourn?
Real quick, ready?
Wait, wait.
Hold on, hold on.
See, he's got some.
Sorry. Just wanna remind you this Saturday's our home game. We start kickoff at nine. Last game starts at five, so we'll be out there all day, so.
How long will they, I won't get back to Vernon until about five. How long will they, how long will that last game run?
Last game, seniors, it's, I believe it's an hour and a half.
And that's Saturday from what to what?
From nine, and the last game starts at five.
At our football field?
At a high school football stadium.
I came in late, y'all moved to the last meeting, and we needed to have a time for Halloween, so I told Tracy to schedule it and I'd bite y'all later if you didn't like it. Because we needed to let everybody know when trick or treat was gonna be. So are y'all good with the Saturday, the thirty-first is on a Sunday, so Saturday from five to seven?
It's already been ahead of us, I'm fine with it.
I thank y'all. I told Tracy, I said, I take it, whatever.
Don't change it now, no.
I'm just letting y'all know that was on me, that was not on Tracy. I
I do, are we having, we doing the trick or treat thing?
Well, the church is gonna go from, uh
But the city's not.
We have not had success with it in the last ten years.
Anybody can go down there and participate if they want to.
Anybody will go there at their church, and they need home. Of course, they come down here and sit, but in the end, they extend the whole dead end.
But it's gonna overlap about an hour, I think. So it'll be real good because that, you know, they can stay there and then they can go around town.
Haunted hallway.
Around the haunted hallway too.
That's the last night of the haunted hallway, yeah. They kick off at seven.
All right, do I have a message to adjourn? Second. All right, babe?
Remember meeting your friends.
Oh, man. To adjourn.
Highway.